Good evening, everyone. I would like to advise all those present the notice of the regular meeting of the municipal council of the city of Bayonne of July 14, 2021, as provided to the public in accordance with the provisions of the Urban Public Meeting Act of the state of New Jersey. Notice of time and place of this meeting has been included in the annual notice of meetings, which was posted and filed with the City Clerk in the Jersey Journal and the Star Ledger. An additional notice of time and place was posted and filed with the City Clerk and forwarded to the Jersey Journal in the store ledger by fax in regular mail on July 9, 2021. Regular meeting of municipal council of the city of Bayonne is now in session. Both parties, please. Ms. Pedina?
Mr. Carroll?
Here.
Mr. Galais?
Yeah.
Mr. La Palusa?
Here.
Mr. Perez?
Here.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Here.
Please rise for the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we get started, I just want to give the announcements I usually make at the end of the meeting if nobody's here to hear it. Just some passing about what's going on in Bayonne. So tomorrow night down 16th Street Park from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., the interfaith clergy of Bayonne is hosting a time of healing and mental health awareness. So we encourage residents come down, everyone is welcome. And then again, on August 3rd, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., from 21st Street to 23rd Street is the National Night Out, which is a great time to come out and meet our police officers and interact. They have a lot of mentors for kids, you know, to be comfortable and interact and get to know the community, for the cops to get to know the residents and the residents to get to know the cops. So again, we encourage you to come out to them. And also tonight is the summer, and every Wednesday is the Summer Concert Series at 7:00 p.m. down 16th Street Park where they're permitting. So we encourage everyone on nights that we're not having meetings to go down there and enjoy it because they really do have fabulous stuff. And then on one, another note, I'd just like to call out attention to Juch's Sweet Shop on 47th Street and Avenue B. He's been in business here for 80 years. Started out with his grandfather had it as a stationery store, and then it was turned into a candy store by Juch's father and now Juch. And he's decided that he's going to retire. It's a happy story. He wants to enjoy some time. So I encourage everyone to stop by Juch's and get your last Juch's Best Egg Sandwich and wish him well as we do all up here. So that's it. And Madam, you may begin now.
Okay. The first item is an ordinance of the city of Bayonne in the county of Hudson, New Jersey, approving the form and authorizing the execution and delivery of the lease purchase agreement with the Hudson County Improvement Authority relating to the issuance of up to $95 million aggregate principal amount of the authority's city guaranteed lease revenue bonds and any notes issued in anticipation thereof by the Hudson County Improvement Authority. It was introduced and passed at a first reading on May, April 14, 2021, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law. With notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at the hearing of May 12. Final passage was postponed to the meeting of June 16, 2021, and is now before the council for its consideration and a final passage. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak.
We're going to continue this.
Okay.
I just want to make everyone aware, local finance had a meeting this morning and they have not acted on this. And until they act, we are unable to take any favorable action. So we're gonna postpone this until the time that local finance takes action.
Madam, I would like to table it.
Yes. Mr. Perez, your second. And on the motion to postpone, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
Oh, two is an ordinance of the city of Bayonne State of New Jersey authorizing the guarantee of the payment of the principal of an interest not to exceed $95 million aggregate principal amount of the city's guaranteed lease revenue bonds. Are you going to move to table this also?
Yes, please. Same justification.
Second.
And on the motion to postpone, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
Oh, three is an ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriations limits and to establish a cap bank. Was introduced and passed the first reading at a meeting held May 12, 2021, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law. With notice that it would be further considered following a public hearing at the meeting of June 16, was postponed to this meeting of July 14, and is now before the council for its consideration and final passage. And it was given a second reading at the meeting of June 16, and the public hearing is still open. And the council will now recognize any person interested in this ordinance. Opportunity to be heard concerning it, the council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak.
Before I invite anyone, I'm gonna ask our CFO, Donna Mauer, because there was questions last meeting about this. Can you just explain to the public in CFOEs on what exactly this is?
I'll do my best. This ordinance is procedural. It's done every year before we introduce the budget. It allows two things. It allows us to increase the amount of appropriations we use from one year to the next and allows us to bank the difference in what is called a cap bank. The reason we do this, the state every year sets a cap on which you can increase your appropriations from one budget year to the next. They're called in-cap appropriations. Every appropriation in the budget now is in-cap with the exception of the library, debt service, and grants. All those other appropriations have a cap on it. We do this ordinance, the state allows it to increase it up to three and a half percent. We never need it, we never use it. We budget it. So what we can do is we take that difference between the two and a half and three and a half percent, and it goes into what they call a cap bank. It stays in that bank for two years in the case that we need it for subsequent budgets. If there's some kind of an emergency, you have to, I mean, I've used it once in my previous job because we got rid of an authority which was outside the cap, and we took on all the employees. So it increased our budget by taking on all those employees. It's just something that you do as a just in case.
Thank you. Is there any questions? No chance of a question?
The explanation was, last week, nobody really understood what it was. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We do have one hand raised in the audience.
Okay. You can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hand raised. Now?
Is the hand still raised?
Okay, yeah, they just unraised their hand.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else want oh, three? Okay. No protest against objections to or statements in favor of?
Don't move. Okay.
And on the motion to close the hearing, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
And resolution ordering final passage.
Don't move.
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
Oh, four.
We're gonna withdraw that. It's gonna be withdrawn.
And a second?
Motion.
And on the motion to withdraw, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
Oh, five is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter 33, Planning and Development Regulations and Chapter 35, Zoning Regulations, which was introduced June 16, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law. With notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of July 14, is now before the council for its consideration and a final passage. And Councilmember La Palusa moved that the resolution be given a second reading. Mr. Galais, will you second?
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter 33, Planning and Development Regulations and Chapter 35, Zoning Regulations. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak.
No hands raised at this time.
Okay. No protest against objections to or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
Don't move.
Second.
On the motion to close, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
And resolution ordering final pass? Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
Oh, six is an ordinance of the city of Bayonne, county of Hudson, approving the financial agreement buying between the city of Bayonne and Madroga Chosen Urban Renewal LLC for the property located at Chosen Field Way, which is identified as block 751, lots 1.15, as shown on the official tax map of the city of Bayonne, which was introduced and passed the first reading June 16, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law. With notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting, July 14, and is now before the council for its consideration and final passage. The motion to withdraw. And a second?
Second.
To withdraw, right?
To withdraw. On the motion to withdraw, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
Seven is an ordinance of the city of Bayonne, county of Hudson, consenting to the sale of the property at 175 West 7, the project, at 175 West 7, Urban Renewal LLC to 175 W7 Development Urban Renewal LLC, and authorizing the assignment of the financial agreement buying between the city of Bayonne, which was introduced at a meeting held June 16, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law. With notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of July 14, and is now before the council before its consideration and a final passage. And resolution moved by Councilmember Carroll, giving the ordinance second reading. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance of the city of Bayonne, county of Hudson, consenting to the sale of the project at 175 West 7, Urban Renewal LLC to 175 W7 Development Urban Renewal LLC, and authorizing the assignment of the financial agreement between the city of Bayonne and 175 West 7, Urban Renewal LLC to 175 West 7, Development Urban Renewal LLC. And the council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak.
No hands raised at this time.
No protest against objections to or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
Second.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
And resolution ordering final passage?
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
Oh, eight is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter 7, was introduced at the first reading at the meeting held June 16, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law. With notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of July 14, and is now before the council for its consideration and final passage. And resolution moved by Councilmember La Palusa, giving the ordinance second reading. Mr. Galais, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter 7, Traffic. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak.
No hands raised at this time.
Okay. No protest against objections to or statements in favor of this ordinance has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
Second.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
And a motion to close?
Move it.
Pass, I'm sorry.
Move it. Second.
And on motion of final passage, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
Oh, nine is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter 7, Traffic, which this is for restrictive parking zones and deletes too, which was introduced and passed the first reading at a meeting held June 6, published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law. With notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of July 14, and is now before the council for its consideration and a final passage. And a resolution ordering, giving the ordinance second reading, moved by Mr. La Palusa. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter 7, Traffic. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak.
No hands raised at this time.
Okay. No protest against objections to or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
Don't move.
Second.
Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
And resolution ordering final passage? On the resolution for final passage, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
Our first speaker is Gail Gudusky. Good evening, everyone. Once again, I'm here with respect and concern. However, I was speaking to someone that in days past was a part of our city's government. I noticed that although I keep bringing up relating issues relating to residents in the city of Bayonne, I feel that they are being hurt on fall and fallen on deaf ears. I then said, I don't think I'll be attending any more meetings. They said, see that? That is what happens. People get frustrated and bow out because things aren't changing for the good of our residents. It is all politics. People and authority, for the most part, are only concerned about their careers and what's in it for them. So here I am again. Some of you need to listen and take action on the concerns of the residents, no matter how small the issue. To the residents, notably, attendance seems to have increased at these meetings, but once your issue comes to light in our defense, you pick up and leave. As noted at the last meeting, some of the council said everyone is welcome and to air all their concerns. Please say to the entire meeting, your input is important. Constructive comments on any issue are always welcome. Now, here we go again. We are still concerned about the conference of the city, not the infrastructure. The county has given $500,000 for a walkway along the water. It would be really nice for residents if other bridges were a priority. For example, the 440 walkway for safety, shouldn't that be a priority? The 32nd Street Bridge, a disgrace. At the last meeting, I noted that I contacted the Attorney General's Office regarding the division of motor vehicles question, are you a citizen? It clarified by answering yes. It then prompts registration for voting. And nobody is verifying the documentation as to whether or not he is a citizen. We need to do something about that. Now, tell us the increases. Can someone please explain to me why 65% of our CARES Act dollars that were used for salaries cannot go back to the residents to the community? Are there regulations? It boggles my mind that all these funds are sitting somewhere and not being utilized for the betterment of our businesses and residents. May I ask what account these excess funds are in? By my estimation, it's over $5 million of taxpayer money. Can someone answer that question of their specific regulations that we cannot give back, give it back to the taxpayer?
Well, the first one you want to talk about? Okay. You talking about the CARES Act from last one or the new one? You talking about the money spent last year?
The money spent. Okay, we already budgeted for salaries. I know some of the money was used for overtime pertaining to COVID-19, but I don't think it was $5 million.
Right. Well, we didn't get $5 million because it's all reimbursable. So we have to spend it, submit it, it has to be reviewed, and then we get the money in. We've received 1.3 million so far. Probably next week, we'll get the second tranche, but everything that we have spent on that is within the grant limitations. And when we cover salaries, that does help the taxpayer because one of the big things that happened is we had a mass retirement. We lost over 90 public safety. And we were in a pandemic. We couldn't hire any police, we couldn't hire any fire. So what we had to do is we had to backfill, we had to pay overtime. Luckily, we had the CARES grant to help us pay for that, otherwise that would have went in the budget and the taxpayers would have had to pay. So when you look, it did even balance out. Yes. I mean, it comes with protocol that we have to follow. Trust me, I'm going through the audit right now. Okay? Check every penny. Thank you for the explanation. You're welcome.
Director Carter, two issues. I've been receiving calls from residents. The new company isn't picking up garbage or recycling on certain blocks, as you know. I know you are aware, why is this happening? Further, I have personally witnessed, along with others, in Zone 3, and heard about one and two, that they are picking up both garbage and recycling in the same truck at the same time. What is going on? Why are we paying two contracts and the recycling is not being put in a place where it can assist the environment?
Okay, so as far as the missed garbage goes, that would keep the missed list and it's called in. The reason we got nights, should work out a little better, is that you wake up in the morning, if your garbage is still there, it's all first thing in the morning, and nine times out of 10, they're right now out there to pick it up. When you call later on in the day, they could be done, their backups are ready, so it's harder to set the truck back out there to go and get it. Sometimes I go back out that following night, whatever, the other zone, one truck will go do all the mist in, for instance, if they're in Zone 1 right now, they do the mist in Zone 3 if they're just missing. With the recycling and cardboard, when some of that is missed or when it's out on the wrong nights, what will happen is some zones are still putting it out the old way. So what they're doing is, and they do it, and it could happen after this month, but it does get mixed. They're in the zone that's not a recycle night, for instance, last night, a lot of people in Zone 3 put out recyclers, which would have been their regular recycle night. They're going to pick up the garbage, that means it's gonna lay there for three days unless we can contact every resident and say, it wasn't your recycle night, you have to hold it until Friday or bring it back in, or it stays out on the street until Friday. So I instructed the hall to, when that happens, just pick it up. I'd rather it go into the garbage, when it gets to the transfer station later, they sort all that stuff out. So it will be recycled, but we won't get the credit for the recycle because it goes to the transfer. We bring it to each facility, then we get credit for that recycle. So we're losing a little bit, but not much.
Okay, well, just a suggestion, maybe in the next letter, like the next tax filing, you could put a flyer in there to remind residents, many of our residents, as we know, are senior citizens, and they don't listen to the phone calls that you've been doing or read the newspaper any longer. So because it is becoming a little bit of a problem, and we're supposed to be, you know, making a little money and getting a little kickback versus it all on one truck. But thank you for the explanation, Director.
And as far as putting it in the tax bill, that is a good idea. We had talked about doing that. We'll have to wait till that bill will come out and then how mechanism is that we put it in with the tax bill. Because it will also reach a lot of the, we do have out of town landlords, and then they always say, well, it's my tenant, when we give them a ticket, you know, the tenant is their responsibility, so it's up to them. So it definitely would be better if it goes out the tax, but they can reach everyone.
Thank you, Director. Now, I understand that the city hires two interns, neither are residents of the city of Bayonne. Previously, I recommended that we have an ordinance that any hires are residents of the city of Bayonne. These are college students studying law. I really think we have plenty of college students graduating from Bayonne High School that are going into law, and I think they need to be, I think you need to reconsider who is being hired for interns in the city of Bayonne. It's our tax dollars, it's students that work hard, that live in Bayonne, they deserve to learn something from the people that sit in this hall. Thank you. Next, I've noticed that town city employees are unprofessionally and unsafely dressed. I've noticed that town city employees are unprofessionally and unsafely dressed. People doing physical work in and around the building are wearing shorts. Really? I also noticed that some are unprofessionally dressed in the offices. Regardless if the building is still closed to the public, everyone should be abiding by the dress code. As a former employee, I did. Personal impressions do make a difference. The outside of this building, I know you guys come in through the parking lot area, take a look out of your front. It's a disgrace. It's an utter disgrace. That's our city hall. That's our city hall. It's a disgrace. Now, as most of you know, I was a part-time employee after retirement at City Hall. I believe I was told by many I added professionalism and my work ethic was to be envied. I resigned on 9/10. Since I was no longer allowed to work at home during COVID, I was told by Assistant Law Director, in order for me to work at home, I needed to provide a doctor's note. When I asked what my other options are, she said, no, we do not have any. Reason for resigning, my health is more important than a part-time job. Although there are still people not in the building working from home. Apparently, there seems to be a double standard. I received my salary and appropriated vacation according to the handbook. That is it. As we all have read in the paper, yes, the separation agreement of another employee. Did you really think that would remain a secret? This is Bayonne. Of course it was going to get out. For an extended, he was paid time off for an extended period of time, not being in the building, most of the time during 2020, COVID, 2019, I was there, I was in the office, I saw what he does. Please review page 21 of the employee handbook regarding employees who resign. Section E, any employee who resigns during any calendar year shall be entitled to their earned and accrued prorated vacation days. There's nothing about sick, there's nothing about personal. And it goes on regarding termination. No mention of getting sick time. So my question is, since I was in the office, very rarely taking a day off, doing my duties according to professional behavior, and not unbecoming in professional behavior, and did not receive a verbal warning, am I entitled to a separation agreement? Page 1, section 1, parts A, B, and C of the separation agreement especially, seems so double standard disturbing, very disturbing. From March 1st through April 20, from March 1st, 2021 through April 1st, 2021, you will be exhausting sick days that would have been accrued through the calendar year 2021. You will provide a sign note from your doctor to provide support. It didn't even happen yet when the separation agreement occurred. Isn't that like a disability issue and not a sick time issue? How do I apply for a package? Like I really took, rarely took days off, was in the building, or that he was, I can say that because I was in the same one. How does that stick with you? Isn't it true, future sick time is not accrued or is given? Counsel and all those in authority, you took an oath when you were appointed or elected. Let me refresh. You do solemnly swear and affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state under the authority of the people. Do the people's work, forget about politics. Please, when you go home tonight, please close your eyes and take a deep breath and ask yourself, is this fair and just for the residents and taxpayers? What will your legacy be? Yes, I know you can't comment on personnel and personnel issues, but it should not stop you from making sure, again, your feet are in the right place, politics aside, and you stand firm to support and uphold the pledge to your work for and with the residents of this city. Yes, this city, I can no longer say great or gem. Thank you for your time. One more thing, the other employee you mentioned in several articles, one that came out tonight, that was harassed by the individual who received the separation agreement while that employee was me. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. It's good to be back. Peter Franco, 101 West 53rd Street, often referred to as Davis Critic of the Jersey Journal, and a controversial former council candidate by Community News, but to the dozens of residents that he calls from about issues going on in the city, they see me as an advocate. And so I'm here tonight, which I have been familiar with, advocating. I want to talk tonight about the Bayonne Housing Authority. And while the DHA is its own autonomous entity, all parts of governments are one purpose, our people. Does anyone know, or is anybody aware of how many housing applications have been accepted by the Housing Authority in the past year?
Um, no, I'm not.
So the Housing Authority has not accepted a single application in over a year. While it may seem as though we're climbing the hill of victory over COVID, there's many families that are still struggling to find affordable housing here in Bayonne. The unique thing about affordable housing, about the affordable housing issue, is that it's not solely tied to the pandemic. These problems have existed for quite some time, for years have been coming to this very podium, over two different administrations, begging elected leaders to require more concessions in the form of education and affordable housing funding from the developers who are requesting generous, long-term tax breaks. So while the Davis administration has proposed more than 20,000 new luxury apartments, it has created less than a handful of affordable housing units in the past seven years. I have names of Bayonne residents who are in desperate need of housing. They don't care whether it's the Bayonne Housing Authority or if it's the city of Bayonne, they just want a place that they can afford to live in. And Private Box of the Director of the Housing Authority, John Mahan, he agrees with me that we, ultimately his entity in the city, needs to work together to address this issue. The pandemic isn't the reason the Bayonne Housing Authority hasn't accepted a single application in a year, it's the fact that they're backlogged over three years. So I politely refer to this as an issue, but the reality is, is we have an affordable housing crisis in Bayonne. And when this moratorium on evictions is lifted, we may very well have a housing epidemic in our city. So my question to our city council is, what plan is in place, you know, or what was the plan going in previous to the pandemic? You know, so that we're working to address the Housing Authority's issues with a backlog of almost three years.
Mr. Franco, I don't disagree with you that we have a housing problem. Before the pandemic, you know, the Housing Authority is a separate agency, but, you know, they do interact with us, and I believe Mr. Mahan meets with the city mayor at least once a month. Before the pandemic, there was plans, as you know, there was a recent sale out of, you know, the two other apartments down that Bayonne Housing was managing, and the Housing Authority is flustered cash right now, and they have all intentions of building another, at least one building. The plan was the city did attain first right of refusal on a piece of property down at Oak Street. I will say it was when we were running for reelection, the mayor said that at the, when we went to the housing apartments, that they were looking to build there. That was the plan. I don't know where it sits now. I know they were looking at other pieces of property, but they do have money, and they do have the intentions. I think they're looking from some direction in, from City Hall about what to build, but we certainly know the need. I personally was trying to help a resident yesterday, two people, I called Councilman Galise, the CP, at something affordable. I get the same call you do, and it's heartbreaking for people who are, you know, they can't afford to live here, they can't pay their bills, they're being, you know, some of them, you know, they're just going to be homeless, and that's something we do need to address. And, you know, I certainly will, I can't speak to why the applications aren't being taken, but I can certainly follow up with the director and understand to find out why and get back to you on that. But I do know the list is ongoing. They don't need new applications. I think last time I checked for a resident, I think they were on the list in 2019, maybe now that's up our back. They are back about five years, they have five years worth of list at a minimum of residents, because they even get to people who are submitting lists, submitting an application today. But I can ask why that's, you know, not accepting applications.
And I certainly just want to go on the record, I mean, if there's any ability to audit that list, to go through and see any of those folks, I would certainly lend my time, you know, to volunteer in that effort.
For they, we can't even say it, they've never shared it with us. I mean, at least not the council.
Do we know the next housing board meeting date?
Mr. Cooper's standing in the back. When's the next date of the housing meeting? Just, you could just yell it up. It's Tuesday at like 1 o'clock, I believe?
Five.
Oh, five o'clock, Tuesday at 1 o'clock?
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock, sorry. This, next Tuesday.
Yeah, the 20th.
The 20th. All right, so the next housing meeting is Tuesday at 5 o'clock, and the location?
Zito Building.
Zito Building. That's Avenue A on 23rd Street, the senior building, the 535. So it's open to the public, it's a public meeting. So if anyone wants to go there and have your concerns, I know Mr. Mahan would certainly welcome you.
Thank you so much, Council President. Along with the housing crisis, we have people in desperate need of food. During the pandemic, the largest soup kitchen in our city was shut down as a result of retaliation against me back in September of 2019, and then precautions of the pandemic did. Personally volunteered for over five years helping feed hundreds of families every week from a basement kitchen, which was temporarily closed due to politics and remaining closed as a result of the pandemic. Hundreds of people for months on end went without the community's generosity. Now, Council President, you and Melissa Matthews played a big part, I'm sorry, let me back up. During that time, our city's most vulnerable relied heavily on charitable organizations, such as the Free Bayonne, Bayonne to Bayonne, and all the food pantries and the volunteer efforts throughout our community. Now, Council President Nadrowski, you and Melissa Matthews played a big part in that, forming a community food bank and delivering food to thousands of families in Bayonne. As I learned two weeks ago, the newspapers revealed that those efforts have been stopped as a result of a delay of a no-conflict letter from the Bayonne Law Department. If I read the article correctly, we are ultimately waiting a no-conflict letter from the Bayonne Law Department so that the funds in which Council President and Melissa Matthews personally raised can be released from the city in order for them to continue to purchase food and then distribute it to the people. And based on that article, it's been about 10 months that you guys have been waiting for this conflict, no-conflict letter, so that you can continue uninterrupted in serving the community. So I can't imagine it taking more than 10 minutes to draw up the stutter, and it blows my mind that it's going on 10 months. So considering the urgency of this matter, I hope we can get this knocked out tonight. You know, Council President, if you're willing to grant at recess at any point in the evening, hopefully Mr. Carter can make that happen. Jay, I will lend you my pen. This isn't about politics, it's about the people. People are in need, and they're Bayonne people who are in need. Jay, I just want to close with this. You know, I read the message boards and stuff in Ocean's Square, the mayor of Ocean's Square, and those folks that are unhappy with you, I don't know who they are necessarily, but those folks down there who were unhappy with you, they refer to you as Bayonne Jay. I kind of hope those folks are right, because Bayonne Jay would kind of end the politics and do for Bayonne people. So I hope you get that letter signed tonight, and we can move forward and start helping people in the city of Bayonne. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I just want to say, just an announcement, that we would not have funds, but we do still have a food bank based on 100% donations, and there will be a food give-out tomorrow at 16th Street Park at 11 o'clock. That's donations from table to table. We also do one every Tuesday, which is from the county, and the city does help us pick that up, and that's on Tuesdays. So Tuesdays it's at 11 o'clock, and usually Thursday's 11 o'clock, and next week we're even having a special give-out, we'll have one Tuesday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday next week, because Goya's giving us a donation next Wednesday. So there will be three days next week, and they're all probably scheduled for 11 o'clock, but you can always check on Facebook to see what time they are. And I thank you to all my volunteers who come down there every week and in this heat, and in the cold, and in the rain, and do it, so. I remember another, it's still food.
Can you answer the question? Are they going to sign the paper?
I don't think I can answer. It's just a statement, it's just a comment section. I don't think I can answer.
So I can't get Jay to boost coffee on the record if I have no conflict letter?
Outside, Council's handling that.
Okay. Probably Allen, do you think?
We'll find that out tonight.
Okay, great, thanks.
Can you spell your last name?
Jane, give you easy.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sure you can cancel. I just wanted to add to what Peter said, Peter Franco. I know that in 2020, a significant need for food assistance led President Haslam, Nadrowski, and Business Minister, Melissa Matthews, to establish the Bayonne Food Bank, and I thank you both for that. Because of your action, all these companies were able to eat when they didn't have anything. And I get phone calls, you're knocking on my door. I know that I was able to get some food boxes from the Salvation Army. I see all of you in action. You want this to be included. Nino, 10 o'clock, Adrian, dinner building, 2nd Street, Sharon, I see you sweating, sweating, and helping people out. So I'm happy you're doing much better. And you too, Mr. LaFolosa. We need an answer. I know that Mr. Capon said the issues want to be solved by, what do we do with the people that are waiting? I mean, these people are happy that they get something, something for the next few or the next two days, because they don't have anything to eat. It is not mine. So we need, we need something to be done.
And I thank you because she has provided us with many boxes that we have distributed. We've gone to her driveway and loaded up trucks, and she's come with her truck and brought food boxes for us to distribute. So thank you too for what you do, and we'll certainly find a way to resolve this and make sure we get that food out to the residents as quickly as possible.
I agree with that. If we are waiting so long, we're going to miss the line for the grants that can be applied for. I know that you ladies are working on fundraising or to get different donations, but we need to take advantage of the government grants that we can, who that needs to work for.
Yes, agreed. Thank you.
Good evening, Michael Morris, 123 Evans State. It was my intention, I didn't know after I signed the sheet that I was not going to make a comment, but at this point, I am forced to make a comment regarding an issue that, in my opinion, has been long dead since the election of the mayor's team. I in no way was ever influenced by anyone here, this council chamber, in the mayor's office, or anyone in the city of Bayonne regarding soup kitchen that was at St. Mary's. I want you to understand it very clearly, and I put my hand to the button, swear to What happened is this, and as I said, I'm being forced now to discuss this matter openly in public. I sent an email, a private confidential email, to Father Peter Worley at St. Mary's Parish. I was not happy with what the statement placed there concerning individuals, and I reported it to his attention many, many times prior. Sent him an email, in turn, shared a private confidential email with this individual. And how do I know this? It was published on Facebook, and they had mailed to delete my email address. After looking at it several times, I made no secret that I had protections regarding any of this. It forced me at that point to have a personal confrontation with Father Peter Worley in the rectory. Father Phil was there in his quicksit. I in turn sent an email to the Victor General's office at the Archdiocese of Norton. I spoke to the Child Protective Services, I explained my concern, and also I questioned whether the people that went in the soup kitchen properly fed, who fed, when their background checks are done. Well, apparently, to some degree, background checks were done, but Father Peter Worley overlooked certain things. I in turn, after several days and probably about two weeks of discussions back and forth with the Victor General's office, head of Child Protective Services in Norton, came to an agreement that they told me this personally. Father Peter did not follow the proper protocol, whose violation, they were very upset with it. I know I was right. Never did I ever intend, and it was never my intention, to ever hurt anyone less fortunate than I. In fact, I was willing to pay out of my own pocket to feed these people, no matter how many weeks it took. I was in the process of making arrangements when I received a call from the Archdiocese telling me, please don't do that, have taken care of, it is not going to be the same as it was previous for a short period of time, but nobody, nobody is ever going to walk into St. Mary's Parish hungry. That was my concern. Yet I was attacked on Facebook, people literally spit at me as I walked into St. Andrews Church. People literally spit at me as I walked out of St. Andrews Church, called me all kinds of names. And you know what I did? I took the fire broke. I wasn't angry at them. I forgave them, and I still forgive them for this today. Don't make me out of the abilities. So now, I would give you my last dollar if I had to. Now getting back to the main subject. The Archdiocese, as I said, returned my emails, my calls several times. Their main concern was that, please not meet this impulsive issue, they were afraid they would create scandal in the church, in the papers, the media. And I gave them my word, and I would never address this, but I'm forced to do this now. My reputation lies on this too. They offered me a settlement, which I refused. I don't want money, I never wanted money. They tried to buy me off, and I can't be bought off. There's a price, and there's a wall. There's no way to me here. So as I said, that's the story, the true story. I have to prove, if you ever want to see it, where my email is clearly visible, it's a pure violation of a Christian or a congregant, whatever you want to call them, and a priest. I should have never, ever, ever been shared with this individual. I'm going to tell you this, I'm not, I'm not looking to rehab their prior history, criminal history, whatever it may be. It's there. I know it's there, I know it's true. It didn't sit well with me, especially being in soup kitchen. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Respect the run.
Okay, Susan, have, do you have any other? Hillary wants to, is it Dave? Yeah, Dave. Nurse Hillary, can you come on up?
Yeah, sorry, I got to sign. Leave me counsel. I want to talk about a few, a few things, I don't want you to go real fast. One, a person retired recently and got paid for all his sick time. All right? The way I understood it, it was an agreement, because when my son left the city of Bayonne, the previous director wouldn't pay him for his sick time. He lost it. Now, I just want to know, maybe the business administrator could let me know how my son could get seven days back, since this guy got all his paid. Can anybody explain this to me?
I'm just going to say-
I know, I know she can do it, maybe-
I'm just going to say the council, we're not, we were not privy to the agreement, we're not part of it, we didn't know anything about it, we found out about it the same as everyone else when it hit the paper.
Okay, so was that a political fix from the mayor?
Again, I can speak to it, and I-
Council people maybe doing it for the mayor, and letting go through, like-
It never came to the council, never approved it. It never came to us.
That, you know, that my son lost seven days, and this guy got paid for everything.
Well, there is, okay. I hear what you're saying. Again, I mean, I'm answering, I'm not really answering back and forth, but you're the second or third person who spoke on that, and I just want to make it clear, because there, we, we as council, and I'm talking about all of us collectively up here, we're not aware, we are not a party to, we did not approve this settlement.
I'm just curious.
I just wanted to make that clear, it's not, it was not, it was the administration-
He went to a different job, and was going to call out sick, and while prior to working to another job, he, I told him that because, then it's really a problem. But this was something that the previous director just said, no, you couldn't do it. But-
You can't. We have an ordinance that this council passed that says-
Send that, that right back and forth, and we'd be here all day.
No, I'm just saying, there's an ordinance that we passed, that said you cannot be paid for your sick time. We passed it in 2017.
About the recyclables, Mr. Carter, the garbage man did come by Tuesday in the third ward, all right? They didn't pick up the cardboard abouts, okay? They're still there, all in the third ward. If you go, you're general plumbing, all right? They have their recyclables around the fire hydrant. Now, if that means a violation right there, that somebody should go up there, the city, you're, somebody from the city should go up there, and it'll still be there today, tomorrow, when it gets picked up on Friday. I mean, it's every, every garbage day, they put it around the fire hydrant. And not one person ever said anything. Garbage been ever refined? Forget it. Why are we even going to see that fire hydrant? Because they put the garbage piled up, piled up. They got all that in the room. I don't know why they don't use it, but they put it near that particular fire hydrant.
I'll walk there personally tomorrow, make sure that-
Just take a look, it's there.
Days it goes out, and when it goes out, because then, like on Tuesday, they're not going to pick up recycling with garbage. On a, in zone three, if it was a Friday, rather than leave it out in the street all weekend, it would probably, if it was missed on-
They didn't pick it up last Friday, and they, they picked it up on Monday, Monday morning they came, all right? Called Al's Garbage Feed, and you get the container company, you know?
What's the city number? You should call the city.
6123.
Nobody's here on a Saturday.
There's an after hours and a weekend number, it's a different-
For you, Mr. Caffin, I don't think you're going to come out, pick up my recycling-
Taking your recyclers, no.
So, yes, I know that, but on a Friday, a Saturday, forget it. All right, so that was that. We pay for recyclables, cardboard for cardboard, bottles for bottles, right? We get money back on that? Yes. Okay. Well, they still do it, and I watched them today, I mean, not today, I watched them the other day again, they still do it, mixing it all up. The problem is, is he don't have that many trucks to go around. So he throws it all in. So are we going to, are we going to pay for mixed recyclables? Are we still going to get paid for the full amount of cardboard and full amount for recyclables? Because if that's going to be the case, they're going to mix it, then why am I separating my garbage, I mean, my recyclables? I talked to Mr. Carroll, he said, no, they take the mixed, but we don't do mix.
Well, and any recyclables that come into the recycle plant that are dirty, what they consider have mixed garbage in them, get sorted out. Recycling plants all sorted out. They factor in 28% waste, due to the fact that some people will, it's peanut butter, they don't clean out the jar, they throw it in it, it gets recyclable, it gets thrown away. So when it gets to the plant, there are residuals that get taken away. So that is factored into the money that we get back from recycling. There's a factor that they go in, what it costs to recycle each commodity, what it sells for, and we get the difference.
I understand that, but, but we'll give them Al's garbage, another, another thing, another week or two. If they're going to keep mixing it, then we don't need them. We don't need them. Okay? This is a diverse city now. This ain't, you know, this is a diverse city. People still don't understand, and Mr. Carter's been calling, I, I, I play that machine constantly all the time, he's on my machine, and I'll recycle the bags, recyclables, they don't get no problem with going, what is it?
There's another one that you're going to get tomorrow, that's, that's, maybe they'll be up on it.
So, I mean, yeah, but it's a diverse city, and some of these people don't understand. You know, some of these people that own houses don't live here. I still have neighbors that just put out, put out mattresses, still have cardboard boxes, not from around here, but bored here, I don't blame them, you know, Bayonne's a great town, but you've got to understand, they, they, they should send the meter people, or meter ladies around, they say, put a notice on their door, or something. Maybe give up one week of, I'm giving out tickets, and, and tell the people what to do. The second thing-
I just want to say, that's a good idea, though, about, about language. When we do send a letter out with the tax bill, we should probably do it in multiple, in multiple languages, Spanish and Arabic.
So, the owners don't live here, they don't care.
Yeah, but they, but we'll send it out.
As you said, I know, I have to go, how do you answer?
We should send it out in multiple languages, though, so we'll make a note of that, that's actually a good idea.
The same thing with the cardboard. You get a windy day, blow the door, it's two things that has to be done. People got to put the cardboard together, or tie it up, right? They have to do that, okay? I know people in the general plumbing, you wait up there tomorrow, you'll see, they just piled it up. You go to that Dollar Store on 25th Street, it's maybe half of this period piled up. Now what happens? It's in the street the next day. If the wind blows it around, the wind comes, the rain comes, after it's soaked in wind, those guys aren't picking it up. Now, the cars are running all over it, and God forbid, you get the city workers to say, you know, let me pick up that cardboard box in the street. It doesn't happen until they, because the thing was with the previous director, that wasn't your job. You have a job to do for that day, you do that. So maybe Mr. Carter could change their mind, their whole thing against it. We do, we, hey, listen, you see that garbage can, you see that cardboard, let's move it to the sidewalk, you know? Instead of just a car running it all. You know, this is a great time, I still like this time. But it's going to, you know, it's getting filthy, little by little, the side streets are terrible, are terrible. The mayor told me two years ago, when I went in his office, we were going to do side street sweeping. Never happened. You know why? Because he lied. He wants to just tell us what we want to hear, and that's it. And you know what? You guys, some of you guys are believing it. It could be political appointments, that you guys are going to have to do, and stay with them, I don't know. But you know what? Let's do what we have to do. Let's keep our city clean. Country Village is filthy, because you know why? The neighbors don't clean, they don't live there. All right? Unfortunately, I can't get out in front of my house and do it. But when I was off the crutches for those three and a half weeks, I cleaned up in front of my house. I cleaned up not just my house, the guy next door, and the other guy next door. But now, they're not there anymore. They all live out of town. So the renters say, I can't rent, what do I have to pick it up for? It's in the street, why do I have to pick it up? It's in the street. You know, maybe we have to teach people. I don't know, maybe, I really don't know. If somebody could come up with a different solution, then fine.
Okay.
You know, but we have to try and figure out what we're going to do with this garbage. Give them another, another week or two, because it's just going to be a disaster. You know? All right, thank you, and have a great night.
Thank you.
Mr. Speaker, we have one speaker, we forgot to put his name up, I didn't have my idea.
Hey, Tom Slary, former employee of the city of Bayonne. When I worked here in 90, 95, 96, and then when we got the new sweeper, the little sweeper, I did all the down side streets through the whole town, that was done one year. After I left, when Mayor Richard Kaski was here, we even carved over the whole end of Broadway. We should go back to that. We have two trucks, two packages, Gary Parker, that's the parks, the CDL drivers, let them drive the CD truck, have that lift, throw all the cardboard that's on Broadway in the truck. We make, we know what we have. So we're asking from Al's, I'm just going, don't know if we're going to get the right now, back from the recycling. I mean, I know Joe from Long Time, Michael, his trucks leak and fluid all over the streets. Uptown smelled like a sewer today. And I know Gary probably smelled it when he walked out of his house. It was horrible. That the fluid is pouring out of these trucks. When I worked for Galaxy, and we covered Bayonne, two full of the holes in these trucks. That's what we got to tell them to do, plug the holes. Side streets through the whole town, first downtown had it, like, last week, two weeks ago, midtown, South Block had it, town smelled like a sewer. They got to tell these truck, these drivers, these owners, they got to plug the holes on the back of these trucks. Listen, some, today was only, what, 80 degrees? And you go uptown right now, 48th Street from every week to every city, smells horrible. And we had rain, and it still smells. Again, back to recyclables, I think we should pick up the whole end of Broadway, because that's when, when it's windy, that's when Broadway looks like a war zone. I think we should wear that whole end of the business area from 54th Street, or way down to First Street, take all the cardboard, all bottles, and two trucks. And, but the contract worried about the side streets. But people are not putting out the bottom, the recyclables.
Well, yeah, that's the problem, people are not putting it out front. And same with the store owners on Broadway, they all put it out, they put it out. Our own ticket class did, and I was going, wherever issuing tickets, but now they did a new contract for the first, but I don't need days without issuing tickets.
Code enforcement, this is my town, new sketch on Joe Dorian. When I was a code enforcement officer under Joe Dorian, and my former boss, Shevuluski, we were told, give warnings. The only way these people are going to learn in this town, and that's anyway, you hit their pocket. We haven't given the pocket the first time, that's it, they don't learn.
We have given warnings, we also have given out fines. And then we get the calls on, why am I getting fined? And, you know, from the courts, and the courts are doing their job, you know?
I feel that, but we should always, city itself, we should put up our own recyclables on Broadway, and we leave at least 60% of the garbage, of cardboard, my, all over the place.
Well, we, you know, we have the U E C guys that go out there every day and clean Broadway. And they're out there at 6:00 in the morning, and you go on Broadway, 8, 9 o'clock, it's clean. By 2:00 o'clock in the afternoon, it's dirty again, between people littering, and just back to the town. So we do our best, what we can. We can't be there 24 hours a day. But the main problem is education right now, getting people used to the new schedule, putting recyclables out properly, putting, tying your cardboard, or at least, put it on the one line. You'll go by and you'll see 15 boxes that just came, delivered to the house, and they don't even pack them all together. They just throw them all out. Which causes the trucks now to have to stay there, rather than picking up one or two items, and just, and then moving on, they're spending five minutes at house now, picking up all the boxes.
Now, the other issue, I'm saying, the corner chairs barrels. Now, you could ask my mom, I used to, when I went up Broadway picking up the garbage cans, I used to cook the bag, black bag, open. I used to drop at least 10 to 20 names a day, household garbage.
Household garbage in the-
Yeah. Now, a friend of mine owned a business on 49th Street, every city, his garbage can was dumped, we had it on video, the individual was walking back to her with the garbage can, then put it in the back of the hop, and took off. And then the kid came back to the store to get a bag. We asked them where the garbage can was. Oh, it was broken. I said, do me a favor, go back outside and go in the truck. Because we got to take, take the garbage can, it was brand new, it was a wire in the basket. My belief, my firm belief, was, less garbage cans that they take, the more garbage cans they take off the route, the less cans that they got.
No, we had cans, we had cans, and we actually added a few more cans later. Anytime we have-
49th and 19th, a busy corner, we got people coming every morning, they come, you wait for the bus, now you got, now we're starting to get garbage back all over the sidewalk again. Is there any way that the city could have come back until one night up there again, on that morning?
49th and State?
49th and every city, high and toasted bagel.
I know, straight like one. Thank you, Tommy.
There is a, well, students at the store, almost supposed to have a garbage can in front of their store.
And that's supposed to put it out without a bag.
Sure. This is, um, just quickly, please, stuff, I think there, no one else, nobody else on, I don't know. There anyone online?
Mike Martin, seven twenty-three, I'm from Steveville. My head is forced tonight, something that I really just didn't want to deal with at this point in my life. So I have no force to explain the reason for my actions. For correspondence of Father Peter Worthy, of the soup kitchen. I have been a parishioner of St. Andrew's parish all my life, for sixty-three years. I was one. I was one of the kids, I mean, that was abused. But I'm a priest who still walks the streets today. Nothing was ever done to him. My actions were solely based. On what happened to me, I was victim. It took me many years to personally realize it. I have to speak about it publicly today. When I was thirty years old, I had a nervous breakdown from it. I survived. I had a good family, good support. So for me to sit, to stand here before you and to deny any of this only empowers this individual who just called me lowlife, left these chambers, I said, this, I can tell you this. That I can leave here with my head inside as it was when I walked in here, and maybe even higher, but no better than anyone else in here. To deny it empowers. Kind of this, I'm not better. Paperwork service, this individual is. Having refused the United States government. This individual was all right, sort of fact. They sued the government, win. So I challenge this individual, very simple. If you claim that you're not, then go to an independent party, somebody who's very impartial. Give it out to them. Submit. And clear it up. That's it. But call me damned, I'm not gonna back down. Didn't do anything to anyone. I watched my friends suffer long with me, some died, some committed suicide, actually, with local residents. So. Just based on that, I have to stand before you and then finish this entirely. I owe it to them, the people that did not survive. I survived, thank you for that. But one other thing, I mean, the more impacted by the people that support this individual, people who we all know in the community, and were blind to it or just don't want to realize it, so I'm telling you.
Friend, you jerk.
Respect the room, respect the chamber.
I don't pick people's friends.
We're not gonna.
I don't pick people's friends, that's fair play in life.
You have to.
Thank you, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
You're a friend, you jerk, alright, because she's been there, you're all mine. Yeah, yeah, hey, that's what I'm saying, come on, I'll find you, I'll find you. Alright? Alright?
Sure. Mister Perez, Councilman Ben Perez for that.
Um, Michael, I just wanna say thank you for your honesty and your good nature. I'm sorry that happened to you, but you're forthcoming, telling the truth. And, uh, I really admire you as an honest, hardworking individual, and thank you for coming forward.
Do we have any speakers online?
Uh, no hands are raised online.
Thank you.
Moving forward, and ordinance proposed for introduction. In this other city of Bayonne, County of Hudson, state of New Jersey, authorizing the vacation of mechanic street right of way, and a resolution moved by Councilmember Perez, fixing Wednesday, August eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, at seven P M in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for public hearing. And final passage, Mister Njazski, will you second? And on the resolution, Mister Carroll.
Aye.
Mister Galais?
Aye.
Mister Lapalusa?
Aye.
Mister Perez?
Aye.
Mister Njazski?
Aye.
Oh, eleven is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter Twenty personnel. And it is, uh, amending section twenty dash sixteen, which is the residency requiring requirements. And a resolution fixing Wednesday, August eighteenth, as a time and place for public hearing and final passage. Who'd like to move it?
Move it, second.
Resolution, Mister Carroll.
Aye.
Mister Galais?
Aye.
Lapalusa?
Aye.
Mister Perez?
Aye.
Mister Njazski?
Aye.
Twelve is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter Seven. It is deleting one restrictive zone and relocating one. And resolution fix, fixing Wednesday, August eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, as a time and place for public hearing and final passage.
Move it, second.
And on the resolution, Mister Carroll.
Aye.
Mister Galais?
Aye.
Mister Lapalusa?
Aye.
Mister Perez?
Aye.
Njazski?
Aye.
Communications is a consent resolution ordering the following communications be received and filed. It covers C one through C eight. And any questions on the consent? And on the consent resolutions? Communications, I'm sorry. Mister Carroll?
Aye.
Mister Galais?
Aye.
Mister Lapalusa?
Aye.
Mister Perez?
Aye.
Mister Njazski?
Aye.
Officers report as a consent resolution, it's moved by the council as a whole, ordering the following officers' reports to be received and filed, and any resolutions incorporated within them to be adopted. Any questions on O R one and O R two? No questions on that one, Mister Carroll?
Aye.
Mister Galais?
Aye.
Lapalusa?
Aye.
Perez?
Aye.
Njazski?
Aye.
Consent resolution moved by Council's whole ordering the following one, uh, resolutions to be adopted. It covers C R one through C R nine. Any questions on the consent resolutions? And a resolution, Mister Carroll?
Aye.
Mister Galais? Mister Lapalusa?
Aye.
Mister Perez?
Aye.
Mister Njazski?
Aye.
O R two is authorizing the participation in the Hudson County Improvement Authority Full Note Program.
Okay.
Second.
Resolution, Mister Carroll?
Aye.
Mister Galais?
Aye.
Mister Lapalusa?
Aye.
Perez?
Aye.
Mister.
Aye.
O R two is rejecting the bids received for acquisitions for the B E O web project. This was the third time it was rebid. And the reason for rejection is it exceeds the lowest bidder, um, exceeds the uh, cost estimates for Hudson Good, and the lowest bid substantially exceeds city's appropriations for the goods and services. Like move it.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mister Carroll?
Aye.
Mister Galais?
Aye.
Mister Lapalusa? Mister Perez?
Aye.
Mister Njazski? O R three is the introduction of the twenty twenty-one local municipal budget and fixing Wednesday, August eighteenth, at seven P M in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for public hearing and final adoption. Would like to move it?
Second.
And on that resolution, introduction, Mister Carroll?
Aye.
Mister Galais?
Aye.
Mister Lapalusa?
Aye.
Mister Perez?
Aye.
Mister Njazski? O R four is approving the temporary emergency number six in the calendar year twenty twenty-one budget.
Move it, second.
And on the resolution, Mister Carroll?
Aye.
Mister Galais?
Aye.
Mister Lapalusa?
Aye.
Mister Perez?
Aye.
Mister Njazski?
Aye.
O R five is designating P R Bayonne Industrial Urban Renewal LLC as the redevelopment for the properties located in the Maritime District of Mott B, designated as block eleven eighty point oh one, lots two and three, and authorizing assignment of the redevelopment rights to P R Bayonne Industrial Urban Renewal LLC for the development of said property.
Move it, second.
And the resolution, Mister Carroll?
Aye.
Mister Galais?
Aye.
Mister Lapalusa?
Aye.
Mister Perez?
Aye.
Njazski?
Aye.
O R six is designating Bayonne Logistics Center owner Urban Renewal LLC as the redevelopment for the property located in the Maritime District of Mott B, designated as block eleven eighty point oh one, lot one, and authorizing the assignment of the redevelopment agreement with Bayonne Logistics, Bayonne Urban Renewal LLC for the development of said property.
So move.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mister Carroll?
Aye.
Mister Galais?
Aye.
Mister Lapalusa?
Aye.
Mister Perez?
Aye.
Njazski?
Aye.
O R seven is authorizing the law director and construction official to enter into negotiations with South Cove Development for, for the leasing of space at one ninety-one Lufanti Way for the purpose of office space, storage space, and parking for a multi-year period, with options for renewal, and authorizing the mayor and or his designate to execute the same.
Move it.
We have a question, or? Alright. Njazski, twenty-eight, can I, what is this pertaining to, please?
Um, we actually did a presentation on it from our, our building director at our caucus last week. Um, so the, um, idea is that the buildings department, which would rent their own space down at, um, the movie theater, basically, that's where they're looking at, they're just gonna, um, enter to negotiations and get a pricing on that. So this is allowing them to see about moving the buildings department. Other towns do it, Jersey City does it, T-Cup does it. Moving them off-site, um, this does not cost the taxpayers any money, because all the expensive salaries, all the overhead, the rent, everything would be covered by, um, the fees collected, mostly from building, building, uh, developers, and any, um, fees to wrap the tenant permits and everything. So the idea is, it would service the residents of Bayonne better in a number of ways. Um, the first being, we all know, as people came here tonight, there's no parking. Being down there, there'll be reparking where people can come in, um, and park and get their permits. Um, the building director had told us, um, some people just don't get their permits because, and they'll get a fine because they just were circling around here trying to get parking, um, and they, and they couldn't get it. Second, it will allow them, um, to be, it will serve the public better, especially came out during COVID, with the building locked down, then having to come out, it's really not, they're kind of outgrowing the area back there. They don't have their own conference room, they have to use the council conference room or, um, the D P W, and they meet often, and they have to bring, um, developers in and meet. Um, also, another, um, thing, they can also change their hours a little bit, not restricted by the hours of city hall and the building being open. So, um, if they wanna have, you know, stagger their staff, so, because a lot of time, you know, people who are doing construction work wanna pick up their permit early in the morning, they could open up earlier, they could stay later because people come later, they can accommodate the public. It's worked in many towns, um.
So thank you for the explanation, but will this eliminate your salary from our budget?
It's not.
It's not.
They never get paid out of our, but they, they are city employees, and it does, but all of it is paid through, um, the escrow accounts, the building fees, all the fees, they're, they are one hundred.
Self-sufficient, yes, self-sufficient.
Have any benefits?
Yes, everything, yes, bank nations, everything, the U C C.
Okay.
And so the one thing, um, is the account that that all comes out of.
There any access that could get a tour, I want to.
We wish, yeah. So, and, and just so you know, just so, um, there was concerns the council had about, you know, right now, they have the money to pay for this, you know, if something changes. So the terms that they're gonna look is to, they're going to prepay their lease to get a better deal, um, possibly up to ten years, that's one of the things they're looking at. Um, so then we don't have to worry about, we'll move out there, and next year we don't have the money to pay and have to move back. So there are some of the things that, um, there are, are going to be evaluated.
And, and if I could just say it, it's all about making the, the client, the citizens more convenient. Uh, Rich even talked about a possible drive-through even, so people could go in a drive-through window and pick up stuff, so.
Wouldn't that be nice, because so far, so far, there were many people who aren't getting permits to do the work that they should be doing.
And they won't have the, the excuse of, they won't have those excuses that they were given before about parking and inconvenience. This is a, it's a way to kind of rectify that.
Thank you, Council.
Mister Lapalusa, move the resolution, who'd like to second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mister Carroll?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Mister Lapalusa?
Aye.
Mister Perez?
Aye.
Mister Njazski?
Aye.
O R eight is authorizing the submission of a grant application and execute a grant contract with the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the Bayonne twenty twenty-two roadway improvements.
We have another question on this?
Question, thirty-second Street Bridge?
No, it's not, Gil, the thirty-second Street Bridge, um.
It's included in the bonds.
It's.
Yes, we already, we bonded for that already.
Okay, any date?
Doing the work. Miss Mack would be the best one, I think she's the one handling that, she's not here tonight. But we, I can certainly, um, have her reach out to you and explain where she is the, I believe she's the sole charge of, um, the movement of that project.
Thank you.
She's, she's talking about the drive over?
Thirty-second Street Bridge over the Prospect.
The walkover, uh, the drive over.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's the roadway, you know?
Now, who'd like to move it?
So move.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mister Carroll?
Aye.
Mister Galais?
Aye.
Mister Lapalusa?
Aye.
Mister Perez?
Aye.
Mister Njazski?
Aye.
Couple add-ons, and it's from Honorable James M. Davis, executive order twenty-one dash oh one establishing the salary range for a park attendant.
So a question for, uh, I guess Director Carter. Where are we looking to put these, uh, park attendants?
Uh, currently, they're seasonal employees. And with, like I said earlier, with COVID and everything else, we aren't hiring people, so we've had people retire. So we're gonna be filling blocks, some of them are already in some of the parks, some of them are on Broadway, so they have various jobs around the city. So they're currently working for us, just now it's gonna be a permanent position with the city.
So when you say park attendant, it's gonna be like, um?
It's an entry-level position, so they may be working in park, it's not.
They're taking care of the park, or they're just watching?
Yes.
Oh, okay, okay.
They took the old kind of park caretaker, so they had civil service, moved a lot of titles, they moved them into one title, so we didn't have an entry-level position, so we have the park attendant, which is still civil service, which is needed to make a salary for.
Okay, thank you.
Yes?
I'm moving.
And on that one, Mister Carroll?
Aye.
Mister Galais?
Aye.
Mister Lapalusa?
Aye.
Mister Perez?
Aye.
Njazski?
Aye.
O R two is ratifying and confirming the actions of the directive of Public Works for the removal and replacement of two outdoor ellipticals and safety mulch by personal geodanno construction in the amount not to exceed nineteen thousand fifteen dollars.
Okay.
Second.
On the resolution, Mister Carroll?
Aye.
Mister Galais?
Aye.
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 Mister Njazski?
Aye.
And three is authorizing the purchasing agent to purchase earth lifts and associated equipment from Hoffman Services, Inc. through the E S C N J corporate pricing agreement in the amount not to exceed seventy-six thousand one hundred two thousand sixty-eight cents.
Move it.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mister Carroll?
Aye.
Mister Galais?
Aye.
Mister Lapalusa?
Aye.
Mister Perez?
Aye.
Mister Njazski?
Aye.
O R four is authorizing the law, law director to execute any and all documents and take the necessary actions to procure online subscription service and legal publication updates from West Publishing Corporation for very commencing August first, twenty twenty-one through July thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, for an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars per year.
So move, second.
And on the resolution, Mister Carroll?
Aye.
Mister Galais?
Aye.
Mister Lapalusa?
Aye.
Mister Perez?
Aye.
Njazski?
Aye.
O R five is authorizing the continued participation in the shared service agreement for public health services and activities with the town of, but, West. West New York for a period commencing June eleventh, twenty twenty-one through June twenty twenty-two in the amount of forty thousand dollars payable to the town of West.
Actually, from, from the town of West, yeah.
From the, from, they're paying us.
Move it. Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Mr. Najowski? O R six, we're going to switch out of place and go to O R seven and eight. Which O R seven is authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute. Committing Mac Maid, the bridge arts festival on Saturday, September eleventh, twenty twenty-one. Through the designated, uh, in, throughout the designated areas in P Collins Park. Move it.
Second. Can you repeat the date?
September eleventh. Uh, on the resolution, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Mr. Najowski?
Aye.
O R eight is allowing the exemption from Chapter Three, Section one point eight of the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne. To Control Services LLC to allow work to be performed on Sunday, August ninth, twenty twenty-one, from twelve A M to twelve P M. Purpose is to implode buildings thirty-two and forty-two down at the Motte Beach. Move it. Date, I got August ninth?
It's August, August eighth.
It's a Sunday, I don't understand.
One second.
August eighth, okay.
It's from what, twelve A M?
Twelve A M to twelve noon.
Twelve P M. It's, it's twelve oh one, twelve midnight on the eighth to eleven fifty-nine on the eighth. It's twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four hours, yeah, yeah. Okay. And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Mr. Najowski?
Aye.
Okay, and we're going back to O R six, which is authorizing a closed session to discuss, to discuss matters involving. Um, attorney-client privileges and pending litigation. It is whereas pursuant to N J S A ten colon four dash twelve A. The city of Bayonne's municipal council must conduct its meeting in an open view. Of the public at all times, subject to the provisions of N J S A ten colon forty, four dash twelve B. And whereas pursuant to N J A, N J S A four, you read all night, you get loopy. Four colon dash twelve B seven. The council, the city of Bayonne's municipal council may exclude the public from a portion of the meeting wherein the city of Bayonne Municipal Council. Discusses any matters, matters falling within that attorney pri, client privilege. And pending litigations to the extent of the confidentiality is required in order for the attorney to exercise his ethical rights as an attorney. Whereas this is the intention of the city of Bayonne Municipal Council. Keep reasonable, comprehensive minutes of this closed meeting. Due to N J S A four, ten colon fourteen. And to make minutes available to the general public after the finalization of the issues involved. Now being therefore resolved that the city of, the city of Bayonne Municipal's council. Shall now recess to a private session in order to discuss, discuss the matters as set forth below above. And being further resolved that the municipal council will not reconvene to a public session at the conclusion of this private session. But no action will be taken on the matter discussed during the private session. That I will take a motion to adjourn.
Can we clarify the participants of that meeting? It's the council members?
The council and outside labor council. It's the council. And, um, Madeline, will, you'll join us and take the minutes?
Yes.
And the administrative council is present?
No, it's the city council and, um, or outside labor attorney.
Okay. So why wouldn't we have the administrative council present?
Because it's, um, not worth, we're, it's labor, it's, um, the topic is labor issues, so we'd have outside labor council socially. Um, if, if he thought that he would need, we can have our council on standby, but it's not issues. The, uh, the authority on it is the labor council. It's to discuss issues within city hall.
But it's still representing the city? So I'd feel comfortable if we took a vote to include.
Labor issues.
Trade council.
I don't know that this needs to be discussed out here. I mean, I, I mean, I don't, you know. I don't object to you wanting to invite other people in. I mean, that's fine, but normally.
Is there no?
It has to be the council and whoever we invite. So if you want to invite somebody, do we want to invite anybody else?
Aye.
Any other measures?
Just curious.
No, I mean, if you want to, you can. There is, it's, it's our, it's the council's authority.
Okay.
Which is all five of us and, um.
But I mean, if you're saying about our council including him, I wouldn't have a problem including.
Okay. Me either.
I know what, what this is about and. I don't see why we'd have to exclude, but.
Alright, so then I move the, the add-on as is.
Okay, and would like to.
Second. A second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Najowski?